Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This thing is on wheels. This is on wheels. This thing. First, I'd like to thank Moscow Borough officials for allowing us here today and for hosting us. Council President Arthur Pensek, Council Vice President Edward Gahn Jr., Councilman Joseph Castro Giovanni, Councilman Dennis Colley, Councilman Mark Gahn, Councilman Daniel Hanna, Councilman William Heim, Mayor Rosemary Warner, Borough Secretary Connie Sanco, and Attorney Solicitor Attorney Bruce Zero. So, thank you for allowing us to have our meeting here today. Reading and Approval of the Minutes that occur from the Board of Commissioners Meeting that occurred on December 1st, 2021. Do I have a motion to approve those minutes?
Motion.
On the question, all in favor? Aye. Opportunity for the public to address the board on agenda items only. Okay, none. Ordinances, second reading, 21-0300. Ordinance number 275, second reading, implementing a county vehicle registration fee. Brian?
Whereas Lackawanna County is a third-class county existing pursuant to the laws of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, and whereas Act 89 of 2013 amending 75 PACS Section 1935 allows all counties within the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania at their discretion to impose a $5 county fee for each and every non-exempt vehicle registered to an address located within said county, and whereas 75 PACS 35... The computer's acting up, sorry. And whereas 75 PACS 1935 requires each county that elects to implement this fee to pass, and where it's authorizing the same, and whereas, beginning January 1st, 2015, 75 PACS 1935 authorizes a county to enact an ordinance to levy the county fee, and whereas 75 PACS 1935 requires the county to notify the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation on or following the enactment of the enactment date, and at a minimum of 90 days prior to the effective date of the ordinance, and whereas upon levy by ordinance of the county and due notice to the department, 75 PACS 1935 directs the department to collect all, to collect the county fee at the time of vehicle registration and deposit the receipts and the fee for local use fund. And whereas 75 PACS 1935 directs the money paid into the fee for your local use fund shall be distributed by the department to each participating county in accordance with the amount collected from the county, and whereas the funds payable to a county from the fee for local use fund shall be used by the county for transportation purposes or be allocated by the county to municipalities in the county in accordance with 75 PACS 199010C. And whereas the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County has determined that it is in the best interest of the county to impose a $5 county fee authorized pursuant to 75 PACS 1935, and hereby presents the following ordinance, number 2524, for approval. Now, therefore, the Board of Commissioners of County of Lackawanna hereby ordains as follows. One, enact this ordinance levying a $5 county fee pursuant to 75 PACS 1935 for each non-exempt vehicle registered to an address located in Lackawanna County. Number two, if a section, subsection, paragraph, sentence, clause, or phrase of this ordinance is declared unconstitutional or invalid for any reason by any court of competent jurisdiction, such decision shall not affect the validity of the remaining portions of this ordinance. Number three, this ordinance shall be in full force and effective 90 days after the enactment as required by law, adopted at a regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on December 15th, 2021. Madam Commissioner.
Are we going to have Larry Lucasek speak on this issue?
You can if you want, but he already spoke about it the first time. This is second reading. It's basically a vote at this point.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve resolution for ordinance number 21-0300?
Motion.
I'll second it. On the question?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Look, I'm very disappointed in this on behalf of all the residents of Lackawanna County that are opposed to this. I'm right there with you. I think we're nickel-and-diming people to death here. It's another tax. My hope is that maybe we could put some in the writing, if you're going to pass this thing, that when the state money runs out, the $2 million match, that we eliminate this $5 fee. So, just, I'm very disappointed.
Frank Suma, not you. Can you take the... Just to put things in a perspective, Jerry and I had the opportunity to look at a bridge just up the road here today. Can you just tell us about that bridge? Like, how much it cost, how long it took, the whole nine yards?
Sure, yeah, that's right up the street, Van Bronn Street Bridge. We had just, construction just finished on that bridge replacement this past month. That's a good example of a typical county-owned bridge, single-span bridge project. Sorry. So, the design and construction phase for something like that, that's not PNDOT-administered, we can typically get through in about two or two and a half years between design, permitting, and construction.
And that's 20 bridges and 20 feet and under.
Usually, yeah, yeah, usually. So... That one, I forget the span on that, maybe around 20 feet or so.
Okay.
Now, that project cost, she's probably around between $1 and $1.5 million, between design, permitting, right away, and construction. That project is, that $1 to $1.5 million is probably equal to all of your total bridge funding for one year, between all of your liquid fuels money, all of your Act 13, Act 89 money. That's, you probably only get maybe $1 million in funding, not even enough to cover one project.
So, do we have to save money throughout the years to build up for a bridge?
Yes, we did not touch that Act 13 money for years to enough to build up so we can do a project like that.
How many years? I'm not going to hold you to it.
A few projects at the same time. Also, keep in mind, your liquid fuels funding, you used to get almost $1 million just in that account.
It's decreasing.
It's been decreasing every year, even before COVID hit. So, this year, I think Tom just mentioned here, you're getting, you know, maybe $650,000. It's probably going to keep going down. That's the trend. So, I guess, big picture, you don't have enough funding sources right now, year over year, to cover what your expenses are for that department, between the roads that need to be paved, the bridges, your annual bridge maintenance, and your long-term capital improvements. You're at a deficit if you don't do something else.
So, if we saved for five years, and then how long did it take to complete it?
That project, once we started, probably two to two and a half years.
So, it was a seven-year total in order to get one bridge completed?
From when we started saving, yes, yes. We started saving for a few at the same time.
And I think, you can correct me if I'm wrong, Larry, but I think we have like 154 bridges in Lackawanna County? We have 12 over 20 feet that are pretty dilapidated and in need of immediate help? Is that right?
Yeah.
And we have about 36 miles of roadway?
Is that right? About, about. Now, keep in mind, this year, we did that bridge project and two others, so we didn't have any major paving projects. We didn't pave anything this year. Hopefully, next year, we'll be able to do a little bit more paving. But you're at the point where we've mostly depleted those, that ACT money, we call it, because we've saved up for a few years, we got a few bridge projects out. Those buckets are kind of tapped.
Thank you.
Okay.
So, Jerry moved. I seconded. All in favor? Aye. Chris, you're in, eh?
No.
Okay, ordinance, first reading, 21-0313, ordinance number 276, the tax revenue anticipation note.
Whereas Lackawanna County duly organized and subsisting as a political subdivision of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania anticipates the receipt of both current taxes and current revenues during the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2022, and whereas the county desires to borrow for the purpose of meeting current expenses by issuing a tax and revenue anticipation note to be repaid from inter alia, those taxes and revenues, all in accordance with the Local Government Unit Debt Act, as codified by the Act of December 19th, 1996, PL 1158, number 177, as amended, and whereas, required by Section 8126 of the Debt Act, the Chairwoman of the Board of Commissioners of the County, the Chief of Staff, and the County have not more than 30 days before the date of which this ordinance is being adopted, and furthermore, hereby confirm on this date, made an estimate from taxes now levied and assessed, and from other budgeted revenues of the taxes and revenues to be received and the expenditures to be made during the period when the note will be outstanding, and have certified that estimate by duly executing the Board of Commissioners of the County as follows. Section 1, Authorization. The county hereby authorizes the issuance of the note in the principal amount and with the specific terms stated in the proposal and attached certificate and transmittal to the Department of Community and Economic Development. Section 2, Form. The note shall be designated Tag 0 per annum. The note may be subject to redemption prior to maturity in accordance with the proposal, registered form, without coupons, will be negotiated in the date, the date dated, the date of the delivery, and will be payable as to the principal and interest to December 30th, 2022, upon presentation by the purchaser to the county in the coin or currency of the United States of America that is legal tender for the payment of public and private debts at the time and place of payment. The exact form of the note will contain unconditional promise to pay the principal of and interest on the note to the purchaser. When due, will pledge and grant security interest in collateral identified in Section 5 of this ordinance. Will recite the valid issuance of the note under the Debt Act pursuant to proper corporate authority. Will prohibit personal recourse against officials of the county. Will certify proper achievement of all conditions precedent to the issuance of the note, and will designate the note as a qualified tax-exempt obligation under Section 265B3 of the Internal Revenue Code of 1986, as amended. Section 3, Execution and Delivery. The note will be executed by the Chairwoman of the governing body, and will have the corporate seal of the county affixed thereto and printed thereon, duly attested by the Chief of Staff. To the extent that any one signature on the note is manual, the others may be facsimile. The designated officers are further authorized and directed to deliver the note to the purchaser upon the terms and conditions hereinafter and in the proposal provided. Receive proceeds thereof, execute and deliver such certificates and other closing documents, and take such other action as may be necessary or appropriate in order to effectuate the proper issuance, sale, and delivery of the note. Section 4, Filing. The designated officers are hereby authorized and directed to certify and transmit copies of this ordinance, the proposal, and the certificate as to the collections and expenditures, which includes the calculation of the cumulative cash flow deficit calculated in accordance with the provisions of the Internal Revenue Code of 1986, as amended, and the United States Treasury Department Regulation 1.148-6D3, the contents of which are hereby approved to the Department of Community and Economic Development of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania and/or to the purchaser for such filing. Section 5, Security. As security for the payment of the note, the county pledges and grants for the benefit of the owners from time to time of the note the first lien and charge on and security interest in all of the taxes, accounts, and general intangibles, including total revenues of the county to be received during the period that the note will be outstanding, together with such amounts to be received during fiscal years subsequent to the year during which the note is issued in the event that the county defaults on the payment of principal or interest on the note. The county hereby authorizes and directs the purchaser to file a financing statement pursuant to the Uniform Commercial Code to perfect the security interest hereby created. All expenses of such filing shall be borne by the county. No kidding. In the event of any default on the note or hereunder, the county agrees to pay the reasonable expenses of the purchaser, including court costs and attorney fees incurred in collecting the amounts due. Section 6, General Obligation. The note issued pursuant to this ordinance shall be a general obligation of the county. The county hereby covenants with the purchaser that if funds are not available for the full payment of the note within the fiscal year in which issued, then the county will either, 1, include the amounts necessary to pay the note in its budget for the next fiscal year pursuant to Section 8125 of the Debt Act, to the extent then permitted by applicable law. Number 2, fund such amounts within the next fiscal year in accordance with Sections 8129 and 8130 of the Debt Act. Or 3, provide for payment of the note by any combination of 1 and 2. In all events, upon notice to and with the consent and agreement of the purchaser, and provided furthermore that in such an event of default, if the county shall have executed and delivered certain credit collateral and/or security applications or agreements pursuant to Section 10 hereof, the general obligation pledge of payment shall be made by this. Section 6 shall include and encompass all amounts in addition to stated principal and interest due in respect of the note by the terms of such credit agreements, and shall conform to the manner procedures for payment, if any, set forth therein or provided at the direction of the purchaser, either as owner or subrogee of the note. Section 7, Tax Covenants. A, the county hereby covenants with the owners from time to time of the note that it will make no use the proceeds of the note, which, if such use had been reasonably expected on the date of issue of the note, would have caused the note to be an arbitrage bond within the meaning of Section 148 of the Code and the regulations thereunder, and that it will comply with the requirements of the Code and the regulations throughout the term of the note. B, if the principal amount of the note plus the principal amount of all other taxes and tax-exempt obligations issued and to be issued by the county or by a subordinate governmental unit within its jurisdictions during the calendar year in which the note is to be issued exceeds $5 million, and if the gross proceeds of the note are invested at a yield greater than a yield on the note and are not expended or deemed or to have expended pursuant to in Section 148 F4B3 of the Code within six months from the date of issuance, the county covenants that it will rebate to the U.S. Treasury within 60 days after the maturity of the date of the note that amount of investment income on the note proceeds, which exceeds the amount which would have been earned had the note proceeds been invested at a yield equal to the yield on the note. Section C, the county hereby designates the note as a qualified tax-exempt obligation pursuant to Section 265B3 of the Code and represents and covenants that the total obligation of its, total amount of its obligation so designated and to be designated during the calendar year of 2022 does not and will not exceed $10 million. Section 8, Award. The note is hereby awarded and sold at a private sale by negotiation to the purchaser at bar in accordance with the proposal and its terms as set forth in the foregoing and attached certificate and transmittal, which, as presented at this meeting, is hereby accepted and directed to be executed by the designated officers. Section 9, Costs. Unless otherwise agreed with the purchaser, all notice filing and legal fees properly incurred in connection with the issuance of the note will be paid by the county. The designated officers are hereby authorized and directed to pay all such reasonable expenses at the time of the settlement on the note. Section 10, Letters of Credit Guarantee of Payment and Subrogation. The county acknowledges the right of the purchaser to negotiate some or all of the note to subsequent third-party owners from time to time and at any time during the term of the note. Moreover, the county recognizes the purchaser may choose in its own absolute discretion and at its own cost to provide letters of credit, put agreements, collateral accounts, and such other and similar guarantees of payment by the purchaser to the third-party owner as may be necessary to facilitate the negotiation of the note to subsequent owners. In consideration of the beneficial interest rate afforded by the county by the increased and facilitated marketability of the note, and in such event, the county agrees and the designated officers are hereby directed to execute and deliver any and all credit, collateral, and security applications and agreements as may be necessary in the reasonable direct discretion of the purchaser and according to its standard business practices to provide further assurance to the purchaser of its rights, either as owner or subrogee, under the guarantee or arrangement to receive payment in full of the principal of and interest on the note when due. In the event of any payment of principal or interest or both is made to any owner of any note by a draw of a letter of credit issued by or other guarantee of payment made by the purchaser, such payment will not extinguish the obligations of the county under such note. The purchaser shall become the owner or subrogee of the note with full rights to enforce payment on the amounts due in respect of the same. Section 11, Ordinance of Contract. This ordinance is a contract with the purchaser and any subsequent owners from time to time of the note. Section 12, Inconsistent Actions. All prior ordinances or parts thereof inconsistent herewith are hereby repealed. Madam Commissioner, we get to read that in 15 more days, once again, at which time you will be taking a vote to pass the tax anticipation note in 2022.
Okay. Moving on, Resolutions. 21-0312, approving... Well, actually, under that, you have the speaker. Do you want to talk?
You know, Tom Arguino lives here if he wants to talk about it.
I saw him somewhere. Where is he? There he is.
He wanted to talk about how the process was timed. He put it out, and James came back in with their rates.
Good morning.
Good morning, Tom.
Thank you, Brian, for reading that, because I don't think I could have gotten through that.
Right.
We did email seven banks requesting the rates, terms, no fees. We got responses from six banks, and PNC was the lowest and has given us the best rate.
Any questions?
Any questions for Tom? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on, Resolution 21-0312, approving current payables.
Be resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby approve the following payables. Lackawanna County's general fund, number is 333234-334081, inclusive totaling $2,188,817.69. Electronic fund transfers, including all payroll accounts, totaling $5,206,793.72. Adopted at a regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on December 15th, 2021. Madam Commissioner.
I'm assuming everybody has had an opportunity to review the current payables. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion.
On the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Resolution 21-0301, approving Lackawanna County Community Reinvest Program Applications.
Whereas the Board of Commissioners has established the Lackawanna County Community Reinvest Program, and whereas the Board of Commissioners are interested in assisting local communities, organizations, and agencies in the revitalization of neighborhoods since they are the foundation for families and community values. And whereas the Lackawanna County Community Reinvest Program has been allocated monies from the Lackawanna County Economic Development Initiative to be made available to county municipalities, municipal authorities, and tax-exempt charitable and educational organizations. And whereas Lackawanna County hereby authorizes the Chair of the Lackawanna County Board of Commissioners to sign all documents related to these grants, be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby allocate funding from the Lackawanna County Community Reinvest Program to the following applicants for the following amounts pertaining to: Number 1, the St. Uvalde Society in Jessup. Project description is ongoing building restoration. Total project cost is $5,000. Amount from the CRP program is $5,000. Elephant Borough, project description is Freedom Fighter Memorial Park Construction. Project, total project cost is $15,000. Amount from the CRP program is $5,000. Number 3, South Abington Township. Project description is handheld portable radios for police. Total project cost is $9,707. And the amount from the CRP program is $5,000. Number 4, the Regents Home Association of Cortez. The project description is installation of an emergency generator. Total project cost is $11,225. And the amount from the CRP program is $5,000. Number 5, Archibald Police Night Out. Project description is the in-car mobile data terminal. Project, total project cost is $10,853. Amount from the CRP program is $5,000. Number 6, the Elephant Hose Company, number 2. Project description, purchasing the fire helmets and boot upgrades. And the total project cost is $5,000, and the amount from the CRP program is $5,000. Number 7, Elmhurst Township. The project description is recreational park maintenance and equipment upgrade. Total project cost is $8,800, and the amount from the CRP program is $5,000. Number 8, the Italian-American Club at Elephant. Project description is an outdoor recreational space improvements. Total project cost is $6,000. Amount from the CRP program is $5,000. Number 9, the Columbia Hose Company, number 5, of the City of Carbonell. Project description is to replace the building's old heating system. Total project cost is $5,000. The amount from the CRP program is $5,000. In Mayfield Borough, number 10. Project description is the council chambers upgrades, including a new air conditioning unit, new chairs, and repainting. Total project cost is $6,000. The amount from the CRP program is $5,000. Number 11, the Meredith Hose Company, Carbonell Township. Project's description is remove and install new energy-efficient windows. The total project cost is $5,850, and the amount from the CRP program is $5,000. Number 12, the Volunteer Hose Company of Troop. Project's description is the fire and rescue diagnostic tools upgrade, including the purchase of thermal imager cameras and three gas detection meters. Total project cost is $7,100, and the amount from the CRP program is $5,000. Number 13, the German Borough. Project description is the flood mitigation easement purchases. Total project cost is $10,000. The amount from the CRP program is $5,000. Number 14, Marine Corps League in Scranton. Project description is to repair and refinish the rear porch and rear handicap lamp. Total project cost is $5,000, and the amount from the CRP program is $5,000. Number 15, the Benton Athletic Association. Project description is improvements to the food stand and clubhouse, including kitchen facilities. Total project cost is $7,500. The amount from the CRP program is $5,000. Number 16, the Whitmore Hose Company in Mayfield. Project description is a debt reduction on recently purchased ladder truck. The total project cost is $185,268, and the amount from the CRP program is $5,000. Number 17, the Girl Scouts in the Heart of PA Harrisburg. Project description is the construction of the labyrinth at the Hillside Park located in Scott, I'm sorry, South Abington Township, but owned by five Abington area municipalities as an award project for a Newton Township Scout. Total project cost is $15,000, and the amount from the CRP program is $5,000. Number 18, the Hurichak-McAndrew American Legion Post, 869 in Archibald. Project description is to replace porch rails. Total project cost is $6,000, and the amount from the CRP program is $5,000. Number 19, the Mayfield Hose Company. Project description is to purchase stormwater removal equipment. The total project cost is $6,084, and the amount from the CRP program is $5,000. Number 20, the Uriqua Hose Company, number 4, Elephant. The project description is a station roof replacement. The total project cost is $15,000, and the amount from the CRP program is $5,000. Adopted at a regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on December 15th, 2021. Madam Commissioner, here to speak upon that is our Director of Economic Development, Ms. Brenda Sacco.
Good morning.
Good morning.
This resolution is approving 20 community reinvest projects totaling $100,000. They're focusing on revitalization and improvements of communities and our neighborhoods. This is the second and the final round of 2021, and it's the 23rd round of the program. The overall public-private investment since its inception in 2013 has been over $17 million. Any questions?
Okay, do I have a motion to approve 21-0301?
Motion.
On the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Resolution 21-0302, entering into cooperation agreements with the Borough of Taylor.
Be resolved, the Board of Commissioners of the County of Lackawanna is hereby authorized to enter into a cooperation agreement with the Borough of Taylor for the Taylor Borough South Pond Street Improvements Project Phase 1 and the Taylor Borough Building Vestibule Entry Door Replacement Project. Before the resolve, the Board of Commissioners of the County of Lackawanna is hereby award the following community development block grant construction contracts for the Borough of Taylor 2. Number 1, general construction of the Taylor Borough South Pond Improvements Project Phase 1 to the American Asphalt Paving Company, 500 Chase Road, Shaver Town, PA 18708. The lowest, most responsible qualified bidder for $114,017.8. Number 2, general construction for the Taylor Borough Vestibule Entry Door Replacement Project, Mar Paul Construction Company, 1335 Regents Memorial Drive, Jessup, PA. The lowest, most responsible and qualified bidder for $36,400. Adopted at a regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on December 15th, 2021. Madam Commissioner, once again, here is Director Sacco.
The resolution states that the county's entering into a cooperation agreement with the Borough of Taylor and contractor agreements with American Asphalt Paving Company and Mar Paul Construction Company, who were the lowest, most responsible bidders, for the Taylor South Pond Street Improvement Project Phase 1 and the Taylor Vestibule Entry Door Replacement Project. These are standard required agreements for the CDVG program. Any questions?
Okay, I'll take a motion to approve 21-0302.
Motion. Second.
On the question, all in favor? Aye. Thank you. Resolution 21-0303, entering into an equipment maintenance... Resolution twenty-one dash zero three zero three entering into an equipment maintenance agreement.
Be resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lockawana County is hereby enter into an equipment maintenance agreement with Two Way Mobile Communications Incorporated on behalf of the Emergency Services, one year term to begin January first, twenty twenty-two, and to cost two hundred and seventy-five thousand, five hundred and fifty-one dollars, eighteen cents. Adopted at a regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lockawana County held on December fifteenth, twenty twenty-one. Madam Commissioner, here to speak upon that is the Director of nine one one, Mr. Al Carney.
Good morning. Uh, this is an agreement between Lockawana County and Two Way Communications to cover the maintenance of our CPE, um, our telephone system and the connection between the six counties that are involved. Two Way does handle all six counties. And the Northeast Corps recommends a single vendor. And it is paid for by fifteen percent money of the state, so it's no cost to the taxpayers here of Lockawana County.
Okay, so, do I have any questions for her? Okay, do I have a motion to approve twenty-one dash zero three zero three?
Motion. Second.
On the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Twenty-one dash zero three zero four, authorizing counties to obtain blanket bonds or crime insurance to satisfy public officials' bond requirements.
Whereas in November twenty-third, two thousand and eleven, Act one oh six became effective immediately, authorizing counties to obtain blanket bonds or crime insurance covering county officers and employees, replacing prior requirements that certain individual officers of the county had separate bonds. Whereas pursuant to subsection eleven thirty A of the Act, which requires the County Board of Commissioners as the governing body of the County of Lockawana, PA to establish a procedure by which it shall annually determine the form and required amount of the required security that will be reasonably sufficient to protect against the risks of loss and compliance with this subsection of the Act. Whereas subsection eleven thirty B of the Act permits the County Board of Commissioners to instruct their county risk manager to compile and submit information relevant to the determination of the amount of required security under subsection A. Whereas section eleven twenty-nine of the Act requires that the form of a blanket bond or crime insurance obtained in compliance with the Act shall be approved by the governing body of the county after reviewed by the county solicitor in consultation with the county risk manager. Be it resolved that the county shall hereby adopt the following procedure for compliance with the provisions of Pennsylvania Act one oh six. Number one, the county risk manager is hereby designated to submit information to the Board of Commissioners prior to the close of every calendar year as to the amount of security that the risk manager recommends that the county maintain during the succeeding year and to provide the information as set forth below to enable the Board of Commissioners to place into force the blanket bond or crime insurance required by the Act for the succeeding year. Number two, in the course of performing the duties assigned under one above, the county's risk manager shall confer with the county solicitor to determine the form and content of the blanket bond or crime insurance that will comply with the provisions of the Act. Number three, the county risk manager will obtain competitive proposals from the county's designated broker of record for the blanket bond and crime insurance that will comply with the provisions of the Act. Number four, upon receipt and review of the competitive proposals from the county's designated broker of record and at least two weeks prior to the close of every calendar year, the county risk manager shall present to the Board of Commissioners for its consideration and approval the form and amount of required security, together with a recommendation as to the blanket bond or crime insurance that will satisfy the requirements set forth in the Act. Adopted at a regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lockawana County held on December fifteenth, twenty twenty-one. Madam Commissioner, here to speak upon that is our Director of Risk Management, Mr. Rick Jones.
Good morning, Commissioners. For your consideration this morning is resolution twenty-one three oh four. If approved, the resolution will enable the county to continue for the eleventh year in a row to be in compliance with Act one oh six, which took effect on November twenty-third, two thousand and eleven. This act allows for counties to purchase a blanket bond with faithful performance of duties endorsement to cover all of its elected and appointed public officials, excluding the county treasurer, who by law must post his or her own bond. Our blanket bond also covers the election board, pension board, the prison board, the salary board, and the county fair board. The blanket bond also includes crime and employee dishonesty coverage for all of the county's eleven hundred-plus employees. The blanket bond is posted annually with the Pennsylvania Department of State through the county's Recorder of Deeds Office. Our county's current blanket bond has a two million dollar limit. The annual premium is only seven thousand, two hundred and seventy-five dollars, which is roughly six dollars per county employee. This is identical to the expiring twenty twenty-one blanket bond. Please note that if the county had to obtain separate bonds for each of the above referenced five boards, those bonds would have minimum premiums of at least two thousand dollars a year, which is a ten thousand dollar a year savings to the county. Our blanket bond replaces antiquated miscellaneous bonding limits previously required of county public officials. Prior to two thousand and eleven, county commissioners were only required to post an individual bond of seventy-five hundred dollars. In accordance with provisions of the Act, I'm recommending that the County Board of Commissioners grant approval to continue our blanket public officials bond with a two million dollar limit effective January first, two thousand and twenty-two.
Anybody have any questions for Rick? Okay, do I have a motion to approve twenty-one dash zero three zero four?
Motion. Second.
On the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Resolution twenty-one dash zero three zero five approving an inmate communication services third amendment agreement.
Be resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lockawana County is hereby approve and enter into an inmate communication services third amendment agreement with Global Tel Link Corporation for the Lockawana County Prison to extend the term of the agreement by modifying the revenue share to the county through the inmate telephone system and tablet programs, provide supplemental payments to the county, and provide expanded technology to the county. It's a five-year agreement to commence on January first, two thousand and twenty-two. It's adopted at a regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lockawana County held on December fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. Madam Commissioner, here to speak upon that is the Warden of the prison, Mr. Tim Betty.
Good morning. Good morning, all. Uh, I just wanted to very quickly hit upon the, what I consider the highlights of this, uh, this agreement. It's a five-year deal effective January first, if agreed to. There's a, a one-time upfront payment of one point five million dollars to the county. Inmates, as a result of this, will get ten minutes free per day messaging. They'll also get something called the Visit Now Service. It's part of a tablet program where it allows for on-demand video visitation. We'll get a US mail scanning system put into place. It's an off-site event that's at no cost to the county, where the mail will be scanned and uploaded onto the tablets, thereby eliminating a, a source of potential contraband coming into the facility. We're also going to get one-to-one tablets for everyone in the facility. And, uh, one of the underrated things is the core education suite that, uh, that are on the tablets, and that includes things like cognitive behavioral therapy, parenting while incarcerated, a GED program, a job skills program, college courses, et cetera. And on top of all that, we're going to get, provided by GTL, an onsite administrator for forty hours a week. Now, this, this deal was very, I gotta give credit where credit is due. Commissioner Dominic was very much involved in, uh, in working this deal out. And I think it's a phenomenal deal, and I highly recommend it.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve resolution twenty-one dash zero three zero five?
Motion.
I have a couple of questions.
Okay, go ahead.
So, how much are these? How, this company, GTL, how much are they ma, if they're giving us a million five, how much are they making? I mean, that sounds off, like, it sounds like they're really taking advantage of the inmates.
It is a five-year deal. I think that's part of why it's such a high number. Uh, the last time around, I believe they gave us seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, uh, three, four years ago? Maybe three and a half years ago or so? So, yeah, the, I mean, they're-
Well, I saw an article in the paper just, I don't know, the last week about, you know, the state looking into this. And, um, you know, my concern is that they're going to come in and say, don't charge them. And then we're going to have to pay that million and a half back if that happens.
I, I don't foresee that happening. The one thing, the, to keep in mind is that we're charging, it's twenty-one cents a, a minute. And that is, there's some national, um, legislation that's been brewing for years. And, and that's pretty much where things had settled, that twenty-one cents. We were very mindful of that with the last, um, contract with GTL. We kept it at that rate because that's what was advised by industry experts to, that, don't go above twenty-one cents because they figured it was going to settle at that. We're at that rate still. We maintain the same rate for the, for the, uh, I guess you could say for the families of the inmates that, that they're speaking with and the inmates themselves.
Do we have a no refund clause if something happened with the state? That we don't have to pay it back, or?
Uh, not, not that I'm aware of, but I don't think that that was addressed. I, I, I don't, I don't think that they could touch that because that is part of the deal between Lockawana County and GTL, regardless of whatever could happen out there, uh, as far as something along the lines of what you're thinking, Commissioner.
If they went bankrupt, then we wouldn't get it, but.
Yeah, this is a much better deal for the inmates at this point than they have received during the course of the last many years.
Absolutely, and that's why I pointed out the core program that they're also offering because I want to really make sure that the, the judges are aware that there's some, some stuff there that, that I know, once they're aware of it, they're going to, during sentencing, they're going to be telling individuals, I want you to get, I want you to complete this program that's on those tablets, free of charge, uh, because it benefits that individual with our rehabilitative efforts. It's going to supplement them.
I, I'm going to just, um, supplement what, what Tim said, if you don't, if you don't mind. Okay, so the twenty-one cents per minute is for calls. And that's what it was five years ago when we initiated the first contract. And it is within the FCC regulations.
Yes.
Um, the video conferencing and the messaging is twenty-five cents per minute. I was explained by Tom Gimney, actually, last night that with regard to the messaging, if I send an inmate a message, it's twenty-five cents. But when they respond back, it's five cents a minute, is how it works. And we were, they were getting, um, under the last agreement, three free minutes of messaging. Now they're getting ten free minutes of messaging.
Yes.
Um, additionally, last time, we received a one-time lump sum of seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. This time around, and that was for the phones because the tablets had not been approved until after our administration took place, like, two or three prison board meetings in two, two thousand and nine, twenty, two thousand and twenty.
Yes.
Um, so my thinking was, uh, if we got seven fifty for the phones, we should get seven fifty for the tablets. Um, and that's kind of where I, I, I came up with the one point five million dollars. And again, that's between GTL and the county. Um, and I thought it was warranted in light of the fact that we have to generate income. I think you pointed out the fact to me recently that this year, per inmate, it's costing the county almost a hundred dollars a day for two thousand and twenty-one, correct?
Yes, it's at ninety-eight dollars and, uh, ninety-eight dollars and five cents. And, and the reason for that, the lower the population, and we're lower now because of, uh-
We have like six-
The pandemic.
Six forty or something.
Yeah, yeah, we're, yesterday, we're at six sixty-two. But the lower the number of inmates, the higher the cost per inmate. It's just, just the way it works. Uh, we have housing units that are open that aren't completely filled, like when we had nine hundred inmates in the, in the facility.
So this million and a half goes back to the inmates, so for programs and for-
No, goes to the county and our general fund.
Yes, goes to the general fund.
However, the other thing is, and I, and I, the article that cri, maybe, I don't know if this is the article you're referring to, but the article that I wanted to address was, um, it said, uh, county budget mostly sound yet shameful. And then it stated that, that I indicated that we will receive one point five million upfront from Global Tel Link and estimated that prisoner phone calls will generate an additional five hundred thousand dollars next year. That's because, under the first contract, we received fifty-two percent of all revenue generated from phone calls. Now we receive seventy-five percent. So the twenty-one cents stayed. I just increased the amount of revenue that the, the, the county i- is, is receiving under the agreement. So we didn't, uh, that didn't affect the, the, the inmates. It affected GT, GTL because they get less revenue now and we get more. With regard to the tablets, under the initial agreement five years ago, it was twenty percent. And then when I took office, I called them and I got it amended to twenty-five percent. I wanted to increase that as well. So what we're doing is the first year, we get twenty-five percent of anything having to do with, like, videos and messaging, that any revenue generated through, through, uh, those modes of communication. But then we also, at the end of year two, will get a two percent bonus. So we'll get the difference between twenty-five percent and twenty-seven percent, whatever that is, we'll get paid as a bonus. Then in year three, we get four percent bonus. In year four, we get a six percent bonus. And then in year five, we get an eight percent bonus. But again, the amounts are staying the same that we are charging, uh, the inmates. Now, it also indicates this, this article that this will attempt, thus the, will the commissioners attempt to balance the budget on the backs of the sum of the most vulnerable and poor people under their jurisdiction? I find that offensive, first of all. I was a public defender. I fight for the indigent. I always fight for the underdog. I've been a lawyer for twenty, twenty years. That, that's what I, twenty-one years. But I have, when I looked at this agreement, the one thing that I thought to myself was, okay, if it's twenty-one cents for calls, twenty-five cents for videos, twenty-five cents for messaging, it maybe should be somewhere in between because it, it's, it's more efficient and it's easier access than phone calls, but it's not as, um, personal as a video. They would not, that's the one thing they would not budge on. And believe me, I, I, I really, uh, gave them a full, um, going over. So that's why we got, in exchange for, for keeping at the twenty-five percent, this GTL Core Education Program, which is attached as Exhibit F, which you, you just referred to. Now, there are cognitive behavioral therapy and mental health, GED, job skills, personal finance, religion and spirituality, reading and literacy, legal topics, personal development, college classes. There are a slew of educational programs on here. For GED, it's GED, um, the core curriculum and the material, one hundred and fifty courses, one hundred and fifty courses for GED test prep. Then there are, for religion and spirituality, a number of, uh, articles and courses in different religions. Reading and literacy, again, trying to help people who maybe can't read or don't read as well as, as they should or, or want to. Many, um, videos on that. There's also college classes to get people started so that in the event that, you know, college is something they want to attain when they're out, they're not going and they're cold, they have all these, these courses. Also teaches them how to, how to write a letter, how to write a resume. And what I found out last night, which, Warden, you probably don't know either, and it was, I found out, is that this program can actually be taken with the inmate. The inmate contacts, uh, GTL will do, you know, at the prison for them. And then, I'm not sure what Real World is, but it's some sort, uh, it's, I don't know, but it's some sort of program that they sign up and then they can log into this, this, a core education program indefinitely when they leave the prison. So it's quite valuable in, in, in my opinion. So we're also, right now, I think we have made, we had, what was our initial ratio of tablets to inmates?
I believe it was three to one.
Now we're at two to one. And we will be at one to one. And also, we will have a number of them on site so that in the event that we get an influx of prisoners or a number of them break, which, which happens, there's no downtime, we have replacements. We also are going to have, at no cost to us, a, a full onsite GTL IT person to take care of those issues because right now it's falling on the, the shoulders of our, of our Captain of Intelligence, Captain Walsh. And like he indicated, the, the, the mail. I've said this before, I'll say it again, that when people go into prison, the only solace that their families have, I mean, people with drug addiction, and, uh, is that they're, 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 they're safe. So we've been doing everything we can to keep our prison free of drugs. So by having the mail not even entering the prison, it protects our employees from having to open that mail. It protects, it's another safeguard from having anything come into the prison. Um, and it also frees up the, our, our employees' time because we don't have to have somebody scan the mail now. We have somebody doing it for us. That costs GTL forty thousand dollars to do, and we're getting it for free. Also, and I talked to the, the Warden about this, and I mentioned it at a previous meeting. It was the, I, I want to give credit where credit is due. Judge Gibbons, who's the, the Chair of the Prison Board, he indicated that because you have so much money in the canteen fund, which is supposed to be used for the, um, benefit of the inmates, that we use some of that money to help, um, to, to put on the tablets for everybody so they can have, um, now, first of all- Now, first of all, there, there is free content, a ton of free content, including this education package. There's a ton of free content for all the inmates, and they'll all have tablets and access to a tablet. But we were going to, we wanted to do it for the holidays, but we didn't get this approved until today, because it was a long agreement. But, you know, we are going to use some of the canteen fund, so that people can communicate more with their, with their family and their, and their friends. Let's see, what else there is? I think that's about it. So, I want to say that, oh, the other thing is, we eliminated the vendor who used to do this. We used to have a vendor who we paid $140,000 a year, to do our commissary or food.
I think just for the, the phone contract is around $60,000, for the oversight of the phone contract.
Though he, they also oversaw the food and the commissary.
Yes.
The food, we're already done with, we have a contract for 20, until 2025. You prepared the RFP for the commissary, which is expiring in February, and then I negotiated this contract, so we eliminated the, a vendor, so we eliminated 100 and, 140 total.
I think it came in that neighborhood, yeah, total, for, between the three contracts.
Yeah, so, to, to look at this contract, and to have takeaway B, that we're doing something on the backs of our most vulnerable citizens, is astounding to me, because there's so much to benefit the inmates in this contract. Wouldn't you agree?
Yes.
So, I, you know, my opinion is, the only thing shameful is the article itself, and they should spend a little more time looking at the facts and a little less time trying to find ways to hate on me personally. So, I'm proud of this contract, and, did you say a mo, did you, did you make a motion?
I did.
Do, do you want to second it?
No, I don't, no.
Okay, I'll second it, and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Nay?
Nope.
Okay. That's it, thank you. 21-0306, approving an area agency on aging amendment.
Be resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County has hereby approved the amendment for professional services between the Area Agency on Aging and the Family Service Association of NEPA, to provide additional information, informational services to the residents of Lackawanna County, and to extend, extend the term to, from February 1st, 2021, through June 30th, 2023. Adopted at a regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on December 15th, 2021. Man of Commissioner to speak upon that, here is our Director of Aging, Mr. Jason Kavulich.
Hey, Jason.
Good morning. This amendment expands our work with the 211 system through the Family Service Association. It, it's a pilot that will help us develop a closed loop referral network with our, our phone system within the office. So, that means that when an individual calls the agency, they'll be connected to 211 if they're looking for information, but not only will they be connected to the information services they're seeking, those, those calls will come back to the Aging Office for us to see if there's any other work we need to follow up with that older adult for, for, for information services, or et cetera.
Does anybody have any questions for Jason? So, I have a motion to approve Resolution 21-0306.
Motion.
Second.
On the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. You'll be sticking around. 21-0307, approving a Human Services Change Order.
Be resolved, Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County has hereby approved the Department of Health and Human Services Change Order with SCRAM systems, in the amount of $407,095. Adopted at a regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on December 15th, 2021. And Commissioner here once again is Director Kavulich.
This amendment will only change the scope of work and the deliverables in this contract. It, it is not a change in the overall budget, so it, it's really just a language change to, to meet the county's needs as we move forward with the project.
Anyone have any questions for Jason? Do I have a motion to approve 21-0307?
Motion.
Second.
On the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Thank you, Jason. 21-0308, approving an amendment.
Be resolved, Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County has hereby approved the amendment to the agreement with Top Business Solutions Wells Fargo for the remaining 26 months of the lease term, with the price adjustment, price adjustment from $23,057.28 per month, to now being $19,657.28 per month. Adopted at a regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on December 15th, 2021. Once again, I'm sorry, and Commissioner here to speak upon that is our Director of Purchasing, Mr. Joe Wexler.
Good morning, everyone. This reduction in the monthly cost is the result of returning a piece of underused copying equipment. It will reduce the monthly fee by $3,400, and for the 26 months remaining on the lease agreement, it'll be a savings of $88,400.
And I just want to say that Top Copy was, was very kind. I called them about a machine that we had, which was $3,400 a month, and it wasn't being used for the original purpose that it was supposed to be used for. It was actually just costing us money and not really serving us at all. So, they were very kind enough, they were kind enough to remove that machine at no cost to us, which is what reduced our monthly fee by $3,400. Do I have, does anybody have any questions for Joe? Do I have a motion to approve 21-0308?
Motion.
On the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
You're welcome.
21-0309, approving an agreement with Source Incorporated.
Be resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County has hereby approved an agreement on behalf of the District Attorney's Office with Source Incorporated, for the cradle point for the SWAT truck at a cost of $2,261.95. Adopted at a regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on December 15th, 2021. Man of Commissioner representing the District Attorney's Office today is one of our SWAT members, please, or answer.
Good morning.
Good morning.
This cradle point router will be installed on our SWAT truck. It'll provide a secure Wi-Fi connection for us on tactical scenes, and it will enhance our command staff with decision-making abilities by allowing a flow of information quicker into that command post.
Does anybody have any questions? Do I have a motion to approve 21-0309?
Motion.
Second.
On the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
Thank you, Tom.
Motions. Hold on. I, I'm going to make a motion to, it's 21-0310, I'm going to make a motion to accept the proposal submitted and awarded, I think that should be awarded, the design and installation services for the tower switch upgrade to Icon Technologies, 16 Salem Avenue, Carbon DOPA 18407, pending solicitor review of the agreement at a cost of $67,750. I already made the motion, but would you like to talk to us about it?
Sure, Commissioner. The agreement that we're making with this switch upgrade is to improve the quality of service of our wireless ring, to improve bandwidth and reduce downtime that we normally have with our existing system.
So, in layman's terms, it just speeds things up?
Yes, it'll make things faster.
Does anyone have any questions for Mike? Do I have a second to my motion?
Yep.
On the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. You're sticking around?
Yes.
21-0311, I'm going to make a motion to accept the quote from Joyce Electrical Incorporated for the visitor tracking cable runs for the Q track system in the government center at a cost of $18,769.59. I don't even know what I just read there.
Okay, well, the Q track system was approved last year for actually tracking individuals that are coming into the building, to make sure that we can-
That's right.
-secure the facility and protect our citizens, especially with this COVID situation. If we had to get anyone out of the building, we don't necessarily know how many people, visitors, I should say, we have in the building at one time. So, this will actually allow us to monitor them and prevent anyone from going into other areas that they shouldn't be going into, because there will be an alert going off to the sheriff's station, and they will be able to respond quickly.
How will they be?
There, there is a badge that will be given to-
Okay.
-all the, all the citizens that are coming in and entering the building. So, we will have designated areas that they're not supposed to be going into, and then once they break that area, an alert goes off, and the sheriffs can respond.
Great. Anyone have any questions for Mike? Do I have a, no?
No.
Do you have a motion to, do I have a, I just made a motion. Do I have a second? I don't know what I'm doing up here. Go ahead. On the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
Thank you, Michael.
Opportunity for the public to address the board.
Good morning. Ralph Antonorme Madison Township. It's nice to see you people out here. I know about a few years, they didn't go to county, to every township, that's nice to do it, but we have a place in Madisonville, too. We have a community building, that's part of Lackawanna County. If you want to show up there, you know what I mean?
We are, we are, I, I don't know who schedules them. Ask Brian Jeffers.
Well, I was just saying, that's the end of Lackawanna County. You guys don't know, I'm trying to remind you each time, you know that, right?
We will. We're going farther away ones now, and then the closer to home, when the winter gets back.
Right, you don't know how to get there, okay. Listen, I think they're living better in the prison than we are. I'm 82 years old, my wife is old, they're living better than we are. Maybe they're getting too much, maybe they've done something wrong in the first place, they wouldn't be in there, just like all the guards in there, they're pretty much, I don't care, hey, I've got seven brothers myself, and none of them are in there, and some of them should be in there, and some of them guards shouldn't have been there, and they got away, they could have slapped in the hand or whatever. Some things you just don't do, you know? God forgive me. But anyway, I'm looking for a part-time job. Maybe you can help me out? Can, can, can you do that? I'm just looking for a part-time job.
We're looking for CEOs.
Thursday, that's all, that's all I want.
Only Thursdays?
Yeah, only Thursday, all right? Come here.
They can have this one only Thursdays.
But I'm glad to see somebody coming up, because it's like when I was on the school board, you run into the public, and why don't you do this, or why don't you do that, or about the taxes. Show up and speak for yourself. Then, then you'll find out, well, you can do, some things you guys are doing fine, other things you're not, and the lone wolf over there, I feel sorry for him. I've been alone a lot, on the road. Anyhow, I want to wish you a Merry Christmas and Happy New Year.
You, too.
And I'll be watching you, okay? Jerry.
I'm glad you're staring at him when you said that. Brian, put that on your, on your list. Anyone else? Hi.
Welcome to North Pocahontas. I'm Mark Garhan, Marshal Councilman, and also Director of DPW. I want to thank the commissioners for the replacement of the Van Brunt Street Bridge. I know that was earlier on the agenda, but I just wanted to say a few things. In particular, Greeman Peterson, their engineering firm, and Frank Suma, who we have been in contact with since the planning stages. He has kept us, the borough, in the loop, he has kept us informed, and if we had any concerns whatsoever, we would address it with Frank through our engineer, and they were immediately taken care of. And Larry Lukasek also, what a great job they did. We have had not one call of inconvenience for the residents. They work closely with the school district, because this is a bus route, and Dr. Powell, they, we work with to make sure that there's no disruption in the busing. They did have a few headaches with the flooding going on, but they did a marvelous job of completing that, and it is a magnificent bridge. It was in a sad state, a very unsafe state. So, it was needed. I know it's a, it's a long process, funding, we do funding ourselves, we know how hard it is, we've got to plan out for years to take care of major projects like that. But I wanted to thank all, all the commissioners for their support, and, and in particular, Frank Suma and GPI for the wonderful job they did.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, Commissioners, other business. Chris.
Just want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and have a happy and safe New Year, and hopefully 2022 is going to make, be a big improvement over 21, so, that's all I have today.
Jerry.
I echo Chris's sentiments, and I hope it's a happier and safer New Year, and everyone try to stay safe and get vaccinated.
Okay. I just want to remind everybody, I don't know if we still have names on the tree, but in the prison, we have a tree with names, where my son gets his haircut at Jennifer Salon in Peckville, there's a tree with names, and they're underprivileged kids who need a little extra help, their families. So, adopted a few children, it's awesome to do, so, it makes you feel good. Please, just, you can reach out to any, but you can reach out to, where did you reach out to? Where, where did you adopt?
We did with the Adopt an Angel program.
Adopt an Angel. So, you can do that, you can find a tree, and go to the, like I said, there's one tree at Jennifer's Salon in Peckville, and another tree at the prison, but just try to help somebody less fortunate. Also, there's a fundraiser for Larry Napolitano.
Napolitano.
God, Napol, I said that 12 times, too. Napolitano, his fight against osteosarcoma, did I kill that, too? Osteosarcoma. So, it's a rare form of bone cancer. The Tapasta Dinner, a basket raffle, silent auction, and desserts, it's Sunday, this Sunday, December 19th, from 1:00 to 5:00, at St. Catherine's Church, located at 220 Church Street in Moscow, PA. Tickets are $10 each. This poor man, please, he's young, he's only about 20, I think, so please support him. Have a nice holiday, Happy New Year, don't drink and drive. Thank you. Do I have a motion for adjournment?
Second.
On the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
Mr. Byman.
Okay.